Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by saying for the record that our city clerk, Adrian Brightfelder, is excused for the evening. So we have Acting City Clerk Corey Burbach, our Assistant City Manager. So Corey Burbach, Assistant City Manager, you're hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at 5:45 PM in the Historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the secondary responder model.
Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 18th, 2024. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Our work session topic this evening is the secondary responder model, and I'll turn it over to Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police. As I promised, I would give you frequent updates on the secondary responder model. Just a reminder, you know, a year and a half ago now, you all gave us direction to come up with a plan. Last year, about this time, I presented to you all on that plan. Since then, we've had a number of things have happened. So part of that plan, and just as a reminder, is that the Internal Working Group, which is made up of city departments, as you can see here on the organizational chart, has been in, and they'll talk about it more, but it's been in place for a while. As you can see on the organizational chart, this is all who makes up the internal working group. As I said before, what we did is we took the core group department heads out of the mix and let the people that go out and do the work come up with how to solve the problems and work through the problems. And again, you'll hear some of that later on. I will point out a couple of things that have happened since we talked last. Well, that's the last, but last fall, our crisis intervention team, which you're going to hear more about tonight, became full staffed, which is two police officers through the federal DOJ grant that we have, and then our law enforcement liaison through Foundation Two. And again, I'll let them introduce. I don't want to take that away from that. Another part that we have started, as you can see in the tan here, the CIT portions of fire and dispatch. So we did some introductory training for fire department. The goal is, at some point, as they're getting reorganization stuff and as they start to develop, they're actually going to look at having actually crisis intervention team members to that. And then dispatch, there is some modules on how they can do crisis intervention team. And then talking with Jessica George, she's very interested in that, and we're looking at how we can do that as the call comes into 911. I will point out the different parts of this. So we have the internal working group. We talked about secondary responder. That's what they do. They're looking at the long-term solutions. The police department side, fire department, dispatch, we're all first responders. And what I'll say is, for a crisis intervention team, they're like responder and a half. So the next level up on that. But they also respond as first responders in a number of things. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just have the different commanders of this, of the divisions that we're talking about today, and then the internal working group co-chair come up and talk. So that's Captain Steve Radloff, so.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Steve Radloff. I'm the captain of the Community Policing Division. Community Policing Division is essentially made up of, oh, thank you, essentially made up of the community policing officers, so the officers that wear the yellow shirts that you see on the bicycles, school resource officers, and then the newly created Crisis Intervention Team. And Lieutenant McTag is here tonight. He'll talk a little more in depth about the Crisis Intervention Team. So the Internal Working Group actually was formed in 1995 through the City Manager's Office. Over the years, it basically came to the police department to head that group up, and we felt like we weren't tying a lot of loose ends amongst city departments. So at that time, we revamped the Internal Working Group, and it is now chaired by myself as well as Ben Potoff from the Housing Department. We're primarily composed of city departments with an inspection and/or enforcement role, such as, I think you saw them listed up before, but I'll run through them again. Engineering, fire, health services, housing and building services, planning, police, Public Works, Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support, and then the Water Department. Some of the optional departments that attend, especially if we request them for further guidance, would be the City Attorney's Office, also City Manager's Office, and Leisure Services. We meet every other week now. It used to be a monthly meeting, and we just found that a lot of stuff was either getting not resolved or resolved between that month. But now, if we meet every other week, we can give each other more updates. The main focus is essentially common issues among the city organization through the departments that before were falling through the cracks that we weren't communicating on. You know, if housing was working on an issue and we were working on the same issue, we may not know that. Now that we're in the same room every other week in a meeting, we can discuss those issues that we're having, as well as, you know, some of the problem people that we deal with in the community. You know, if engineering has a municipal infraction to serve on somebody, when we meet every other week, they can talk with us and say, hey, can you assist us in serving this municipal infraction? I think I kind of already alluded to the notable successes, opening the communication channels between the various city departments. You know, some of the issues we deal with are quality-of-life issues around the city, such as, you know, like the street storage problems, or zoning violations, or housing violations. So that's kind of our main focus and notable successes we have. The challenges that we've really seen come about in the last few years, especially since COVID, have been brain health issues in the people that we are dealing with. We've also discovered some gaps in city ordinance, and I'll go into one of those gaps here in a little bit. So I'm going to show you some pictures of some homeless camps that we've encountered throughout the city. All these pictures you're going to see are since January 1st, so they're just from 2024. I'm not showing these pictures to, you know, to show you how bad it is or anything. I'm just showing you what city staff deals with. And I'm going to give a shout out to Public Works. They do a great job in helping us. Paul Davis and his crew do a great job in helping us when it comes time to clean some of these homeless camps up. Sometimes the members or the people that are staying in these encampments, they'll clean themselves, or they'll clean the site up when they leave, but a lot of times, we are left with a lot of trash after they vacate. The process that we use to notify them is if they're on public property, say in a park or under the right-of-way of an overpass, we will serve them a notice that they have to vacate that location. We give them 48 hours. We always try to have some type of face-to-face contact with them, but that's not always possible. So we'll leave the notice there. We'll record the fact that we left the notice, and then if they weren't there, we'll try to, you know, check back in with them over the next couple days before we basically do a cleanup. We're not going to throw stuff out that is valuable. You know, if we see something that could be, you know, valuable to them, such as a driver's license or personal documents, social security card, or if they have like a, you know, like a small stereo or something like that, anything that is valuable, we're not going to throw it away. We're going to keep it and wait for them to come forward to claim it, and we will return it at that time. So on the screen, the pictures that are here, the South Locust Street Cave, so directly across from like where Taco Bell is, there's a cave that is in the hillside into the bluff. And for years, it's been fenced off, but people have found a way to get beyond that fence and get into the cave area and live in there. And the gentleman we had in there, he, for lack of a better term, he was a hoarder. He had bags of cans that he went around the community and picked up and stuff, and for whatever reason, he wouldn't cash them in. He would just take them back to the cave and put them in there. But you can see there's, in the middle picture, stacks of newspapers and discarded furniture that he found out and about in his travels that he kept there. The Locust Connector, this is under the pedestrian walk bridge. This is a very common spot for them, very popular spot, and it seems like when we serve notice and then we go back and do a cleanup after the person leaves, somebody else is right back in there. So it's a constant effort on our part. Some of the other camp sites we've seen so far this year, B Branch Pump Station, somebody had a tent down there. There was nothing in the tent, just a tent. So we posted notice, we came back a few days later. Everything was as we had left it or as we had saw it, so we cleaned it up and took the tent. Another picture of the Locust Connector, the trash you're seeing on the top picture and the picture on the far right, that was what was left over after the person had vacated. You'll notice in the one picture, right below the no trespassing sign that the state DOT put up, that that doesn't seem to be a deterrent. The Fenger Street Overpass was basically along the railroad tracks, and how that came to our attention was somebody saw a campfire, and I actually think I have a picture of that coming up, but somebody saw a campfire and reported it through the reporting process through the city, and we basically went down and did our routine with that. The Mount Carmel 61 Overpass, that's an active one. If you go down there right now, it probably looks very similar to this. We were supposed to have a cleanup this morning with the state DOT, but they weren't able to get their contractor here today, so that's going to occur tomorrow. But in that picture, you can see the graffiti that the person added to the girders, which will now, you know, result in DOT having to come in and either sandblast that off or paint over it. Moss Park, again, a lot of trash left behind after the person vacated. Paul Davis related that the big problem they have in the Moss Park area is when the water rises, all that trash goes into the water, and then it goes towards the pumping station, gets into the equipment, and basically causes problems with the pumps. The picture in the lower part there is actually under the pedestal of the town clock. We had somebody living under there last summer that we posted notice on as well. There's the picture of the top right of the fire, and then we had a site down by the River Museum, and also more Moss Park photos. So this, just some numbers of what we do. 2023, we had 113 sites that we investigated. We posted notice on 36 of those, and you can see the progression from 2001 to 2022 to 2023, went from four to 28 to 36. We do make referrals, and I will explain that here in a little bit. Some people refuse our referrals. They don't want them. They choose to live out in the open. I think the part that we're the most proud of is, it says in here, zero citations, arrests, or MIs were issued in 2023, and I'll tell you, we've never issued one, not just 2023. Up to present day, we have never issued anybody an MI or a citation or made an arrest for somebody that was homeless and camping in a public space. So far, 2024, over the winter time, we don't usually have very many campsites that we're dealing with. So you had one January 3 and February and seven in March, so it's ramping up now. The temperatures are getting warmer. We posted notices on 10 of those sites, cleaned up 11, and again, we had some referrals that were refused. When I talk about the referrals, what we start with, oops, what we start with is this card, and this card comes from CSEI, which is Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa. Basically, it has all kinds of resources on the back with phone numbers, and it could be resources from emergency shelters down through counseling services, clothing, food pantries, housing assistance, housing options, brain health, and even reaching out to the Law Enforcement Center to talk to an officer if they need to report something. We offer services and resources to everyone that we come in contact with. Some of them won't be helped, or another way to put it is they can't be helped, and that's their choice. The question I remember somebody asking recently was, well, where do they go? Where are we going to allow them to go? And I wish I had the answer for that. I wish we had the answer for that, but we don't. We're trying to get the people channeled in through housing options where they can find a house or be put in a house, but like I said before, there's a lot of people that don't want to accept the services because that's the choice of what they're doing. Housing isn't the end-all. Cases have shown that many need long-term assistance, and I listed a bunch of things that a lot of people that are in this situation struggle with, that they deal with. Medical issues, psychiatric issues, medicine access, financial support, counseling, employment opportunities, vocational training. The lack of long-term care and ongoing guidance, I mean, that is one of our big challenges as well. The funding isn't there for the programs that we need to be, but I think we're starting to find partners that are providing what they can. Some of the key partners I listed is East Central Intergovernmental Agency, ECIA. Basically, they're the parent of who put together this reference sheet. And then the Dubuque Rescue Mission, thank you, Jeff. And Hillcrest Family Services and Area Shelters. Those are the prime partners we have. There's several others, but those are the ones we deal with on a more regular basis. And with that, I am done with my portion, and I will turn it over to Lieutenant Mike McTag.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. How are you tonight? Again, my name is Michael McTag. I'm a lieutenant. I work at the Patrol Division, my patrol duties, and I also supervise our CIT team. They are actually here tonight. I'd like to introduce Corporal Joel Cross. He's in the middle. Officer Brendan Nugent, and then our law enforcement liaison, Caitlin Doyle. Just want to kind of want to start out and give a background of the CIT unit. This CIT unit started in 2020. We kind of talked about this, and due to the lockdowns, things like that, we knew we were probably going to see an increase in, you know, some calls for service, things like that, you know, people being sheltered in place, not being able to get the doctor appointments. So kind of started that in the early 20s. That consisted of officers doing it part-time, mostly myself and Corporal Cross. In September of 2020, I actually got promoted to lieutenant, and Corporal Cross got promoted as well to corporal. So I went from our Community Policing Division to patrol, and then Corporal Cross went to this Community Policing Division. I approached Chief Jensen and asked if we could get a part-time team going, so that's how we kind of got that started. I supervised that. The part-time team consists of officers from patrol. It's all voluntary basis. There's some in the Community Policing Division. There were some in the SRO unit, School Resource Officer Unit. They've ranged from being at night to daytime shift, so we had coverage pretty much all throughout the day. Again, these were officers that volunteered to take on this extra role. We started seeing a need for full-time folks to do this, so we, like Chief Jensen talked about, we applied for a grant, hiring grant, and we were granted that and expanded the unit and got authorization to hire two officers. And again, that's Corporal Cross and Officer Nugent. We are fully staffed. It started full-time in August of '23. Also in August '23, we had our law enforcement liaison. That's Caitlin Doyle. She works for Foundation Two, and she is embedded directly with our team, responds with our officers, and also can handle follow-up on the backend as well. Presently, we still have a part-time team. Basically, they assist our patrol officers when the full-time team is not here, and also to basically assist the community at night if there's other questions, you know, that is brain health-related. These are just some stats from 2023. Now, in 2023, we weren't really full-time until September. So the stat on the left, 2016 to 2020, we averaged about 451 brain health calls a year. In 2021, this went up to 743, as you can see, and then '22 and '23, they were still above our, you know, our average pre-2020. The middle screen is basically what the officers do. They can vary from speaking to the subject, and what we mean by that is, you know, if they call in, we have somebody in crisis, they form them relationships with the officers. They talk to the people before they get into, you know, further crisis, things like that. If the CIT officers assisted our patrol officers for calls for service above and beyond their additional duties, you know, it can range from communication to our resource providers, Department of Corrections, things like that. The other stat is our monthly count of our CIT actions, and that is correlating to that middle screen. So as you can see, in January, our actions, we had 28 additional actions. Then in March, it spiked up. So again, these are additional actions that our officers do above and beyond their regular This screen is from 2023. As you can see, the red line is our MHR count. That's what we call our brain health calls. It could be substance abuse calls, any type of, you know, quality-of-life brain, you know, related to brain health that our officers have filed. And then the green line is our actions. One thing I kind of want to point out is, you know, you can see in September, and then October, November, and December, our actions actually spiked up. That's when the full-time unit started on, there being proactive, not reactive, to keep these people's quality of life intact, basically being that constant, if people need to call in, they have them relationships. So again, the main goal is to be, you know, proactive, not reactive. And again, in the left screen, 2023 MHRs versus the actions, we had 52, but only when we were part-time, we had 28 actions. Then you can see 64 and 45 actions. That was the first part of 2023 where we were part-time. In 2024, we were full-time, so we had 58 actual calls for service pertaining to brain health, but the officers have done 131 actions. So again, we're able to be that much proactive, get ahead of things before they become out of control, and that's the main goal, is to keep, you know, the quality of life intact and basically try and keep people out of jail before they get to that full-blown crisis. I just kind of want to talk about some of our partners. This is not all of them, just a few. The Dubuque Rescue Mission is a fabulous partner with us. We actually have a liaison embedded with that, with the mission. We think that's very important because it gives a point of reference. You can be on a first-name basis, you know. If you have something coming up, they can call, you know, Corporal Cross, Nugent, or even Caitlin direct and say, this is what we have going on. Let's work this problem before it gets out of hand again. Visiting Nursing Association, we also have a liaison embedded with them as well on first-name basis. We also have people embedded in our local colleges. That could be Clark University of Dubuque, as well as Loras. Department of Corrections, pardon me, Department of Corrections, we work hand-in-hand with the jail diversion coordinator as well. And again, a lot of these things is basically, you know, connecting the dots, you know, making sure we're passing that information along, kind of like that Internal Working Group Captain Radloff talked about. That's what we do with these community partners, have those, you know, liaisons, so we can pass this information on, so everybody's aware of possibly, you know, what's going on with these folks, so we can get them some help. At the bottom, I have Foundation Two and Caitlin Doyle. She actually is a fabulous resource for us, brings a tremendous amount of knowledge, you know, from her past working, her education, things like that. We rely on her quite a bit. She, you know, can come up with certain resources and plans that maybe we didn't think about. Also, she can be that friendly face, so to speak, you know. If there's somebody in crisis and they don't want to speak with a police officer, she's in plainclothes, she can jump in and speak. We've actually had some calls that way where that actually helped. You know, Corporal Cross stepped out and the person spoke with Caitlin for quite some time and resolved the issue with no jail, and that's our main goal, and got the person the help that they needed. Just kind of want to talk about some successes that the team has had. This person, this is when we were part-time, was an alcoholic. We'd find them numerous times passed out in parks, out in the public, at, you know, motels, completely intoxicated. They would have urinated themselves, just completely unhealthy. Got arrested, I think it was like four or five different intox charges. So our CIT unit stepped in, actually called a bunch of, pardon me, facilities to try and see if they would take this person for substance abuse issues. CIT unit got a plan in place and actually worked with our jail diversion, our jail as well, because we needed to get this person sobered out. So unfortunately, we had to keep him in jail for a week to get him sober, so they can get to the intake. Well, that ended up working. We filed the commitment, got up to Mercy. This person then went to treatment, and we haven't heard from them since, and that was two years ago. This is a prime example of how our CIT unit is proactive, you know, not reactive. A lot of the times, if you see an intoxicated person, it's, well, they're safe for the night. Well, it's not solving the root problem. So that's what our unit did, was step up, solve this, help this lady. She had no support system, no nothing. So we stepped up and, you know, now she has your quality of life back, and we're not finding her in the middle of a park or at a hotel, things like that. So proud of that one. This is another success. We got a call to one of our service providers. This person is very, you know, has delusions, thinks everybody's after them, refuses any type of help because they think they're after them and going to hurt them. This person had severe, severe infection on their feet, and there was nothing we could do to take, get them to go to the hospital. We worked with fire department, tried, you know, worked that angle, worked with the hospitals. Again, they refused. Well, due to the delusions of brain health, you know, he's a danger to himself, obviously with the severe infection. We went and filed a commitment on this person, worked with the Dubuque Fire Department to come up, told them the plan that we have. This person ended up being taken up to the hospital because we had that commitment order, and during the hearing, the doctor says this was another day or two, this person either would have died or lost their legs. So they recovered. Well, two years later, the exact same scenario happened again. Our CIT unit stepped in again, actually worked with the service provider to file the commitment again. Well, this time, the doctor said the exact same thing. Couple more days, this person would not have been here. Well, because of the history and stepping in doing these type of things, at this time, the person was assigned a social worker and has now been placed in assisted living where they can have their quality of life back, and we don't have any calls for service, and we don't have to worry about this person wandering around and possibly finding them somewhere, God forbid, because refuses medical attention when they need it. This is kind of a different one. An elderly individual, they live alone, they're hearing voices, no support system. They would come to the lobby numerous times to report certain things, issues with neighbors, et cetera. Our CIT unit stepped in, tried to build a rapport, which they did, and then got them referred to Hillcrest Services on their ACT team, and this lady has not called in or stopped down for quite some time. She's getting her quality of life back. Actually, the unit did such a well job of getting the rapport built, she'll actually call them from time to time to check in, and they'll chat. So pretty proud of that one. It's just another prime example of how our CIT unit, again, is proactive. This is kind of outside-the-box thinking, you know, for, you know, officers doing it. It's just kind of, like I say, an outside-the-box thinking, following up with this individual. If we can talk with them for 20 minutes and they're good for the day, that's our main goal, so they don't continue to spiral out of control. Last success here, we have this subject, very large person. I mean, he's about six foot seven. He went into a full-blown crisis, became very violent at a hotel. We got called. Officers worked for quite some time trying to de-escalate. It wasn't any de-escalating at this point. Ended up, unfortunately, earning some charges and ended up going to jail. The CIT unit stepped in, worked with jail diversion, the judges, kind of again, that outside-the-box thinking, making sure all the information gets passed on to the correct people. Well, the ex-person actually got held in jail long enough so we could file a commitment, which we then worked with the jail, worked with Mercy, told them everything that we have going on, and this person ends up being committed. They go through the commitment process, get released. Unfortunately, a couple months later, the exact same thing happens again, this time in an apartment building downtown. Well, again, this person ends up, unfortunately, getting arrested. We go through the exact same process again, another commitment. This time- This time, the person decides to accept treatment and actually calls our unit, sometimes for rides, you know, to the appointment, because that's our main goal, right? They decided that this person needs a monthly injection to make sure they stay on top of it. Well, our unit has given this person a ride, they also call him when it comes time for the shot, hey, you know, you have your appointment tomorrow, do you need a ride, do you need anything, they check in and it's been over three months and this person's made every appointment. And again, no calls for service, this person has their quality of life back and again, that's the main goal, you know. They are the constant for this person when they're working here, Monday through Friday, that's the CIT unit, so this person needs something, they know they can call those folks and he can get what he needs. And that's our main goal, to keep this person on the straight and narrow. Here's some challenges that we come in contact with, kind of some of the same things that Captain Radloff talked about with the homelessness, you know, people just refusing services. You know, there was a news article, this gal in town, she spent a thousand days in jail over the last 1,600 for like misdemeanor crimes, we've tried numerous times with the commitment route, they just refuse any and all services. We do everything we can, you know, hospitals done everything that they can, you know, so that's kind of some of our challenges, what do we do with these folks if they refuse any type of help? This one can be like a good spot for like MHI independence, but those are very far and few between, those type of beds, things like that. We've just exhausted all of our local resources, so what do we do with this person? So those are kind of some of the challenges that we have to think about, maybe put our heads together, what can we do, you know? But it's very hard when these people are non-compliant. We also have some other challenges, this person is actually very pleasant, respectable, went on meds, but then off the meds, completely delusional, aggressive, they're violent. The commitments that we have filed, they work, this person will be up at the hospital for a couple days, a couple weeks, pardon, and then we can say, okay, this person got out and like clockwork, day 28, we're going to start getting calls and sure as heck we have, with the person causing problems in the neighborhood again. Some of the challenges here for this type of person is, we're working through things as well, like, you know, follow-up on the commitments, you know, who's there to have some accountability for what they're ordered to do after the commitment is done? So we're working on certain things in that avenue with the region, you know, on how to basically make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do from the court hearing. And also long wait times for competency evals, this person ended up spending eight months in jail for simple misdemeanors when it's 30 days for a simple misdemeanor. So, that was just kind of some of the challenges as well that we run into. And I've kind of spoke on some of these things, but some of the common barriers for the CIT unit is the facilities that say they can take someone, but then, you know, it doesn't work out because some exception. You know, some places will only do substance abuse and if there's a brain health component, they won't accept this person. So we run into some problems for resources where they will take both brain health and substance abuse. Also, what we run into, and I get it, is the HIPAA barriers, how can we have an honest conversation when we're on the front line seeing exactly what's going on with these folks? How do we have that conversation with the service provider? To get our main goal, to get this person the help, that's why we want to have them conversations, but that's kind of a barrier for us as well. And we run into it a couple times, so like if somebody's been seen at Hillcrest for 10 years, they then decide they want to go to Crescent, Crescent has to start all over if, you know, they don't sign any of the releases, things like that. So 10 years' worth of work is gone and now somebody's starting all over again. So, and again, the lack of staff, you know, when assessments are needed, that takes quite some time as well and unfortunately, it's only getting worse for that. And that's pretty much it on our CIT, I would like to thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
So I want to leave you a couple minutes for questions at least here, we're going up to that. So what's on the horizon and I think what you're hearing, this is very complex, there is not a simple solution to this, there's not a singular solution, you know, what do we need? We need long-term solutions, finding better solutions, we need to find partners that fill these broken or missing cogs to this wheel, I call it wheel, I mean, it's a machine, it's working together, if the cog, pieces are broken off of that, it jams up. And you heard that from Steve and Mike, both have talked about that, if there's things that don't work and they talk about, you know, there might be an ordinance gap, there might be a provider gap, or there might be just people not wanting help, you know, and that's where we run into that. You know, like you said, you tasked us with this, we're working through that, we're trying to do what we can, we're not stopping, we're finding more and more partners every day, we've expanded our partnerships to not just be within the city, but to regionally and through the east central region, through the mental health region, Foundation Two and some of that, looking for more options that we can. I think they're doing a very good job in both the internal working group and the CIT portion of this, to try to find, they're working with individuals, they're working with the individual and finding what is customized for that individual. They're not just saying, okay, here's our blanket, how we do this, what does this person need, let's start navigating that on the individual level. Like you said, they're not solving all the society problems with this, or all the social problems with this, what they're solving and what they're helping is the individual on that level. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and they're obviously available.
Great, thank you, Chief. Yeah, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
First one is, how much of the, it's probably impossible to answer, how much of the big spike in brain health incidents would you attribute to more brain health incidents versus better awareness of what they are and better definition of brain health? 10 years ago, acted up, put the cuffs on you, in the cage you go, almost no matter what, and now we're finding other alternatives to that that are certainly good and because we understand it a little better.
I think it's more aware, I think people are just more aware of it, it's more in the forefront, we recognize it for what it is, it's not, particularly on the law enforcement side, like you said, you know, 10, 20 years ago, we didn't do it, you had an option, right? You go to jail or you don't and, or we walk away. And now, and then we go back an hour later, two hours later, three, you know, two days, three days, four days, doing all that. So that's part of how we, it's changed. But again, I think it's just a lot more in the forefront and so we're really looking at that as an alternative.
I gotta say, I'm really impressed, I'm impressed with the fact that a lot of this was driven by the officers that are doing it, that they stepped up and said, what we're doing's not working, we're not helping people all the time. And I fought that fight at the state level on end-of-life support, when we'd be working on somebody who is obviously at the end of their life, we're trying to CPR them back to no avail but to a lot of harm, in my view. You get to the point where you think you're harming instead of helping and that sucks when you're carrying professions like ours, so I applaud you for that. The case you talked about where the subject spent eight months in jail, that's not a loss. Eight months in jail is better than eight months of letting the streets pound you and repeating and repeating and repeating and repeating, it's just the best answer that we have yet and I appreciate that you're seeking better ones, but I don't want anybody hanging their head that that's all we had, so that's what we did, because sometimes it's all you have.
Well, in the future of that, where Sheriff Kennedy is looking at initiatives and how they can transition people from jail back in, and again, is there a handoff? So it's not just routinely, you're out of jail, there you go, you know, go forth, you know, but that's not how it's working now.
Learned a little about that today, out of jail's not easy, it comes with all kinds of barriers, just because you were in jail.
Yeah.
You can't get housing, you can't get employment, you can't get anything and you can't get around it. So anyhow, nice work, thank you.
Mr. Jones, Ms. Wethel.
So, I think you guys knocked it out of the park when you said we're solving, trying to solve the root problem for folks, especially with substance use disorders. And I hope that everyone understands that that one life that you change by impacting their substance use disorder really affects our whole community. It keeps people out of the emergency room, which then offers space for people to come when they need to be seen in an emergency room, when otherwise there would not be room because we're treating someone who's in a crisis. It affects children, their ability to have grounding in a family, their ability to attend school, the ripple effects of this go on and on from one person's substance use disorder and getting them on the right track. So, I applaud you all, but I hope you understand, because I get to see it in healthcare every day, one person's life change and decision to help them change their life affects so many people you can't even count. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate what you do and thank you for the progress you've made in such a short period of time.
And we'll point out, our partners are, we have to have our partners, so even in open lines of communications within the barriers that we talked about, but even like with the medical facilities, be able to say, what is the, is there a better solution to what we have? And so, being able to have those open lines of communication, know people on a first-name basis and the different ones, makes a huge difference.
And I think our community and our size allows us to even improve on what we've established and what we've started, because I know partners are motivated to be there too. Thank you.
Ms. Rizik.
Very quickly, yes, and thank you all for your service to humanity, really, because I mean, everybody in this room has been in a state of mind where we make bad choices. Some people just are in that state of mind a lot and it's, you know, it's part of the human experience for many people. So thank you for being patient with people in that state of mind and trying to help them, as Ms. Wethel talked about. I remember, we used to have more state-funded inpatient facilities, it looks, and now we don't, and I was wondering, to try to end in a positive way, you know, because it's very, you know, there's a lot going on, but what are other cities' best practices? I know you're looking into that and are we doing the best that we can that other cities, or have other cities maybe found some kind of change when they changed this or that? It turned out better and you're examining that, right?
Yeah, we absolutely are and just, I guess, you know, to your point, we look at what's best, let's start with, we look what's best for Dubuque, what can Dubuque handle, what is our capacity, what is our partnership? Where we see the success with all of this is when all of the providers are in one spot, you know, and where we don't have to move people around or try to find them or rely on them to rely on transportation to do things, where you have the ability for a provider, where somebody can go in and get their medical, their mental, their employment, their, all in one spot where there has that. Yeah, we're not there yet and we're not there to do that, we're looking at options where we can do that as a mobile, mobile side, where we can bring a whole groups in, but we haven't got to that point to have that yet, but that's where we're, nationally where you see the best success with this is where you can get that, where you don't have to move people around to eight different appointments to get what they need. And again, because something will fail in that, I mean, it always does and so, that's our next step, that's what we're looking for, that's our pie in the sky, what can we do with that? And again, it's just developing our partners, relying on our partners heavily to help us in those areas and so, that's our next steps.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rizik. Well, we are up on time here, so I'm going to wrap us up, but Chief and entire team, thank you very much for this presentation and specifically for the work that you do on a daily basis. It is really inspiring to see that this is something that started because it was a passion of yours that you really wanted to push for and now you've really professionalized it. You've looked at what other cities have done, you've listened to what the community has said, you've tried to figure out what it is we can and need to do in the city of Dubuque and you're starting to do it. You know, we're getting closer, I mean, we're doing a lot more than we've done in the past, a lot more than we've done in the past and we're getting closer to the things that we need to do to do kind of what you just said, Chief, be able to put it all together, have all these services in one place and be able to actually provide what people need comprehensively. That is a serious challenge and there's a couple of things about it, I think, that are really important for us to make sure that we think about when we're sitting up here, being able to have some work on doing some actual policy. Your focus on partnerships, I think, is spot-on, I mean, this idea of, how can we do more with just what we have? It is, we have to partner with as many different community agencies, we have to look at ourselves as a region, we have to think outside of just Dubuque to be able to get the services that we need and I see you doing that. I think we really need to continue to advocate on the levels that are above us, we need to advocate at the county, state and federal level for a system that actually functions. You know, I was sitting here thinking to myself and I've, you know, done some teaching on some of these things, I've never lived in a time when the mental health system in the United States was funded appropriately and functioned effectively, I've never lived in that time. And that's an interesting thing to think about, if you want to think about ways that we can actually change something. And then for us, you know, one of the things that I think we've done really well in this city, in this group, is the city councils, we focus on housing and we need to keep that focus, we need to continue to push for affordable housing in all the ways that we can, I think it's incredibly important and a huge piece of this puzzle. So, that's all the time we have for today, but thank you very much, again, for everything that you do and for the presentation tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
There being no further business in the work session, we will adjourn and start up soon for the regular meeting.